Good evening, I'll call this meeting to order, it's 8:40. I am joined by my colleagues, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo, Mr. Walner. And our meeting, under the provisions of the open meeting law, our meeting is being recorded by the town via Zoom, is also being recorded and broadcast by NORCAM, and maybe being recorded by other local media. And I would ask you to please join me for the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our first order of business is public comment. If you are joining us in the meeting and you wish to speak in public comment, you can either raise your hand and we'll recognize you, and/or put a chat notice in the chat. Do we have chat function on?
Madam Chair, through you, it does appear that chat function is not working this evening, so I ask folks to raise their hand or put their screen on and wave.
Okay. And do we have anyone that would like to speak in public comment?
There also is someone, who's sharing the screen there, Michael? Can't see people's faces. I see the NORCAM.
You're gonna go to View and pick Gallery.
It was just Phil NORCAM.
I think I may have inadvertently tagged Phil as the only screen we could see, so yeah, you may have to go back to Gallery.
I had to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mr. Austin with his hand raised. Mr. Austin?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Adam Austin, I live at 42 Main Street. This evening, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Sunshine Laws. The founding fathers of our nation strove to develop an open government formed on the principles of democracy and public participation. Informed citizens are better equipped to participate in that process. The purpose of the Open Meeting Law is to ensure transparency in the deliberations on which the public policy is based. Because the democratic process depends on the public having knowledge about the considerations underlying governmental action, the Open Meeting Law requires, with some exceptions, that meetings of public bodies be open to the public. For this reason, I've requested access to observe the deliberations of the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee and the Wastewater Working Group. The Select Board claims that because these groups have held presentations to the community, they are being transparent. Unfortunately, that is not the case. The groups have presented their findings and recommendations to the rest of the Select Board and to the people of the town, but their deliberations have not been accessible to the public. Fortunately, in Massachusetts, the Attorney General's Office works diligently to promote openness and transparency in government. They work to ensure that every resident of Massachusetts is able to access and understand the reasoning behind the government policy decisions that affect our lives. I have asked the Attorney General's Office to look into several issues regarding the conduct of the Select Board, the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee, and the Wastewater Working Group. Time will tell if their office agrees with Chairwoman Manupelli's characterization of my assertions as misinformation. The Massachusetts Public Records Law and its regulations provide that each person has a right of access to public information. This right of access includes the right to inspect, copy, or have a copy of records like the ones created by the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee and the Wastewater Working Group. Unable to observe the deliberations of the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee and the Wastewater Working Group, I have attempted to shed light on their deliberations by requesting public records related to their meetings and work products. My goal is to share any information that I receive with all of the residents of North Reading. I have offered to pay applicable fees to access the information on behalf of our community. Unfortunately, once again, the town leadership has failed to comply with the law. Every government record in Massachusetts is presumed to be public unless it may be withheld under a specific stated exemption. Unlike the Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts Public Records Law, codified at Chapter 66 of Massachusetts General Laws, is enforced by the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Between the 15th of November of 2022 and the 11th of January of 2023, I submitted a series of requests for public information about the wastewater project. On each occasion, the town leadership has failed to respond in accordance with Public Records Law. I've had to redress, through the administrative process provided by the Supervisor of Records, for each of my requests. The Supervisor of Records has issued a total of five determinations, each time ordering the town leadership to come into compliance with the law. There are four additional appeals currently under review by the Circuit Supervisor of Records. Currently, the town stands in violation of five orders. At this point, the Supervisor may notify the Office of the Attorney General for enforcement. I also personally have the option to commence a civil action in Superior Court to enforce the requirements of the Public Records Law. Where applicable, the Superior Court may award reasonable attorney's fees and costs if I do obtain relief. It makes no sense to have to take things this far. It would be simple for the town's leadership to allow the community to observe the deliberations of the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee. It would be simple to allow the public to inspect the public records of the work that is done by that group. An occasional sales pitch PowerPoint is not enough for citizens to be informed as desired by our founding fathers. Compliance with the Open Meeting Law and the Public Records Law would be enough. I ask you, the Select Board, to come into compliance with these Sunshine Laws. Do better for our town. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Anybody that's joined us, if you could raise your hand or, I guess unmute and join us. I do not see anyone else. Mr. Gilberto?
I'm not seeing anyone. I'm Chair.
Paul, I hear Paul. Are you interested in making a public comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sure. Could you please identify yourself and please go ahead?
Okay, Paul DeNero, 402 Park Street, North Reading. And my comment is about the meetings. You know, they started at seven, but they didn't get going for the public until quarter of nine. Is there any way to hold the private meetings on a different night? Oh, you can't talk, okay. Anyway, I would like to have the town consider having the meetings, you know, the private meetings and non-public meetings on a separate evening. I don't see the purpose for having members of families wait for the town to finish their business that has no purpose of the town hearing them. My wife had gone to bed. I had to get her up now because I didn't know how to use the computer. And so it just makes it difficult, you know, everyone talks about about giving people the opportunity to vote and to do other things. And so I think it makes it difficult for people to stay up and not know when the meeting is going to start. So that's all. Sorry for the lengthiness of my speech.
Oh, that's okay. The law requires us to go into an open session and then move to go into executive sessions. And that's why we have to do it that way. There's specific reasons for us to have to meet this way. Believe me, we would love it if we didn't have so many town issues to address ourselves. Most of our families are long gone to bed before we even get home, or you know, we're even done with our virtual meetings. So we understand, we're here till the end, and we really appreciate people joining us. We don't usually get a big crowd for our meetings, and we hardly ever get people to wait till the very end of our meetings. Usually, people are long gone by the time we finish conducting our open meetings that sometimes go into pretty late into the evening. But the law requires us to do it this way. Mr. DeNero, okay? Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? You could either unmute or raise your hand just to let us know. Okay, I don't see anybody else. And so we can move, oh, Megan. Megan, I see your hand raised. Megan?
Megan McDonough from 185 Main Street, Melrose. And I'm joining you tonight because I've been following the MetroTech Project. I have a number of concerns with it, but one of my concerns is definitely that disability concerns aren't being met. And if they're going to have the school up on a hill, it requires this really complicated ramp system to get to the lower parking lot. I think that all of the ways to get to the school should be accessible. Right now, it's more than two football fields in length and may end up being at a rise of 60 feet. I heard that they, in the value engineering, they might be cutting this support building at the bottom, which was supposed to take people from the parking lot up two stories to the start of the 735-foot ramp. And they heard that they might be cutting this building, so that I would assume, but I don't know for sure. So I don't want to say I'm speaking the truth on the record, but I would think that that would make the ramp longer because there's now no help or elevator to the start of the ramp. And I attended their meeting for the school building committee. I got there late, so I just didn't enter. And then tried to speak with them afterwards, and the project manager told me, and again, not quoted, but that disabled people should be happy that they have this nature walk to use to get to where they're going to go, and they can stop and sit on a bench if they need to, and it'll be ADA. So even if some people aren't, you know, he didn't say even if some people aren't able to use it, but I brought up that some people really are concerned that they are not going to be able to use it. And that the concerns still aren't met. And I asked the school building committee, or school committee members, what point in the project the concerns will be addressed. So I'm going to send them a formal letter to ask them that question and try to involve commissions in that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. For those of us, for those of you joining, we do have public comment. It's not limited to just North Reading people, but hopefully Megan is taking up these matters with her own council and board. But for anyone else that's joining us, if they're in our own community, that is. Is there anyone else joining us that hasn't had the chance to speak yet that would like to make public comment?
That is with her own council and board.
Hello?
Or any of, anyone else that's joining us.
Michael, I can hear myself talking all over again, so I don't know if you can mute that.
I just muted Samsung.
Would you mind also muting too? Because we can hear you a little bit talking. I'm sorry, Michael, what did you just say?
Madam Chair, through you, I did mute Samsung SMGN80U only because of the feedback. The person should be able to unmute themselves if they were seeking recognition.
Sure, okay. Okay, so are we all set with public comment? All right, so.
Can I make another comment?
If you could briefly, we do have to get to the rest of the business. Mr. DeNero?
I just wanted to comment on Adam Austin's speech. He did a very good job, thank you, Adam. But in, you know, when I spoke to Mr. O'Leary at the last meeting, we were talking about when they're going to have the next meeting. And so later on in the meeting, I think they had decided the 13th of April or something. But Mr. O'Leary made a comment, and I don't know if he was referring to these meetings, but I thought he had said, and he was talking to Mr. Studo, I thought, he was, or somebody, and he was saying that he was saying that the Board of Directors and the town meetings people can't even talk about subjects until it comes to a town hall meeting. So he said, you know, we're not sitting here talking about these things when there's no town meeting. We have to wait for the town meeting. So I don't know if that's the case. And so anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, if you would, thank you. If you could just mute, and we're gonna move on if there is no other public comment. We're gonna move on to our next order of business, which is an update on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School Construction Project. Based on our last discussion, we wanted to have the Superintendent DeBarry here, as well as our representative on the Vocational School Committee, Mrs. Diamond here. And they are both here to join us, committee member Diamond and Superintendent DeBarry. We are concerned with respect to the accessibility aspect of this project, number one. Number two, how the project design has changed, if and how the project design has changed. And number three, concern in respect to the relocation, how much that is going to increase the cost. Because as you recall, when you did present this project to us many months ago, you had confirmed to us the design and cost was locked in, in terms of the cost of this project. So we need some clarification because it looks like those things have been modified by your project manager and perhaps your architect, or just get some clarification on the facts. So welcome, we thank you for joining us. And if you could give us an update on these matters, we would really appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Diamond, I believe you were gonna speak first?
You're muted, Mrs. Diamond. Just unmute.
Judy, you have to unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted now?
There you go.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, first of all, to begin with, we apologize for not being at your last meeting. I believe it was January 9th. I believe there was some confusion about us being here, and we apologize for that. I didn't realize that until I had a discussion with Mr. O'Leary. As far as these concerns that are being brought forth to this board and other boards and other communities, we have addressed these, and we definitely plan to do that tonight, hoping to clear this all up. But we truthfully feel this is just a ploy to delay the project. I would also just like to clear another fact that was a subject that was brought up at your January 9th meeting, that the Northeast School Committee and Wakefield Board members discussed a hockey rink. And I want to assure you that that conversation has never come up, and we have no intentions of doing that now or in the future. So having hopefully cleared that up, Mr. DeBarry and I will, Mr. DeBarry, do you want to update them as to where we are now?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I would like to confirm that everyone received the documents that I had sent over electronically? Yes?
What did you send?
So I sent a number of documents. I sent outreach letters, I sent a PowerPoint letter, I sent pages of dates of meetings and times, and I sent a page analyzing Facebook data during and prior to the vote.
Mr. Walner, it's a separate packet.
When did it come in?
It's northeast.
Yesterday?
Okay, every, let's, okay, I'm sorry, this is already choppy because of signals, maybe due to the storm. But Mr. Superintendent DeBarry, do you have a design of, a picture of the design that you want to bring up? Perhaps we can just see if Mr. Gilberto can share the, share your screen and show us the project design. We're not really, we're really zoned in on that right now, and I think that's what we were, we were wanting you to show us how the design meets the requirements for accessibility. I think that's what we really want to hear from you. And I don't know if you have a project design that you can share your screen or?
Well, I don't know, I sent that over as well. It's a letter outlining all of the ADA compliance issues relative to some of the concerns that have been brought up, and detailed that Northeast meets all of the ADA requirements as far as accessibility near, you know, sports field accessibilities near our school. We follow all the proper inclines of accessibility for people with wheelchairs. So it was a document that I had sent over ahead of time. It's not something that you could put in a design, but it outlines that all of the ADA compliances have been met. As you all have worked with MSBA and with the state of Massachusetts and with your building inspectors and your zoning boards, I can say thankfully, as the former Director of Special Education, that there is no way a school could be built in the state of Massachusetts without completely adhering to all of the ADA requirements. And we have done so in excess. As you know, it's difficult to build a school in Massachusetts. It's not the flat plains of Wyoming, or it's not Texas, and we're not building, you know, a one-dimensional elementary school. So there are times when people do have to travel. I know this is something that North Reading wrestled with when you put your fields or kept your fields at the bottom of the hill and had to go up a pretty steep incline as well. And that's something that Northeast has dealt with for 50 years. We are accessible, we do have parking spots, we do have a trainer on staff with a golf cart, as well as an athletic director, in case anybody in a wheelchair seeks to get down to the field level. I can say, in 50 years, we've had two students in wheelchairs total. One right now, in that Northeast is always, even under the conditions wherein now, where we do not meet any of the new ADA requirements. Make sure that all of our students, parents, and the public have accessibility to all parts of Northeast, and that will not change. And if there are specific questions you'd like me to address about the design, I'd be happy to. But in the packet is the PowerPoint that we shared, God, back again in 2021, months before the vote, we shared it with this meeting. I have three outreach letters, one that went out March 29th, 2021, one went out May 21st, 2021, and one went out August 21st, 2021, that all have descriptions of where the site will be, the reason we chose the site, and this was well before, a year before the vote. So not at one time did we ever come in front of this board or any other board after being accepted into the MSBA with a different site in mind. So I believe people have referred to what we call as a pre-feasibility study done in 2016 by Durham Whittier, in which at that point, without any review of the sites whatsoever, made a cursory acknowledgement that, hey, it would be a great spot to put a school where the football field is located, and that it would probably be expensive to clear the land and to do some blasting. Well, when we had an in-depth study with architects, engineers, MSBA guidance, that was very extensive compared to the very quick study that was done by Durham Whittier, we found that to meet our educational plan, that the school would not fit on the football field. It was not a possibility. And I think what people don't understand, and I know this board does, is that we're not putting up an elementary school with a little playground next to it. A vocational school includes a majority of programs that have to have access through a loading dock or garage door. For example, I can't put the auto tech shop in the auto body shop on the second floor with lifts and such. I can't put the metal fabrication shop on a second and third floor. I can't put plumbing in all these different shops that also have to be designed to be clustered per the educational plan. I cannot build a seven-story building that looks like the Hyatt Hotel. It will not work. And I think what people would like to say is, all you had to do was put it on the football field, and everything would have been fine. It did not fit on the football field. If it did, then we would be 30 feet from the current school during three years of construction. Regardless of where the school went, we are on various levels of elevation, just like North Reading is. And I know North Reading had the difficult choice of blasting themselves and clearing trees, and I know it's something that nobody on this committee wanted to see, but it was a necessity for the project. And this project is about 50 years plus of kids from gateway communities, of kids from, you know, upper-class communities who don't connect to get a valuable education. I love the environment. Northeast is going to do more with the clearing of the trees than any project that I have ever heard of in this state. We are repurposing trees that need to be cut. We are going to be replanting trees from the site that can be replanted. We are working with programs in gateway cities where we will be able to help replant our trees in their neighborhoods. We are doing everything we can, but there was no other place after a really intense study was done for this project to be. There is no reason why I, as superintendent, my building committee, MSBA, or anybody else would want to spend money to blast an area when we could build on that site. So I understand that when you have a project this size, that there are going to be issues, and we have to weigh up the pros and cons of each of those issues. And it's been a challenge. But this is the project that's in front of us, and we've done the best we can with the money we have and with the location we were given. And we don't, you know, live in a town at Northeast. We don't have choices of old abandoned lots or former schools. We have one lot. That lot was given to us generously by the state of Massachusetts in excess of the current footprint because the plan was, and the hopes was, that Northeast would expand into a larger campus and be able to give access to more students who would like a vocational education. That's why that land that we have owned since the district began is where we need to build. The costs have not changed, so we did not, and again, this is what's a challenge to us is, North Reading is not the first place that I've come and given the same answers to some of the concerned parties. I've been in Wakefield, they've been to Melrose, they get the same answers. The reality is, they are trying to stop this project. You know, the butters are not happy. There are people who believe that, you know, every tree should be spared, and I respect that. But in the world I live in, unfortunately, that can't always be the case, especially when you're talking about a school. I've seen endless apartment complexes, fields, condominiums go up in the same perimeter where our school was going, without any objections. And I'm being completely transparent and honest with you, as Ms. Diamond and I have always been for over 10-plus years. But I would be happy to entertain more questions that I can answer.
Okay, let's move on here. I can't, Mr. Gilberto, I can't locate the documents that. Okay, let's let's move on here. I can't, Mr. Gilberto, I can't locate the documents that um Mr. DeBarry mentioned, but why don't we take uh questions? Um, do my colleagues have any questions? This is questions from the colleagues on the select board. Mr. O'Leary?
Just briefly, in relation to the budget and what was presented to us, you've already stated that the the location hasn't changed, the project hasn't changed. Um, there's been some questions raised as to whether or not the uh cost for site preparation was unforeseen and not included in the budget, and that value engineering was going to have to take place where uh millions of dollars are going to have to be cut from the programming of the school. Could you elaborate on that?
Yep. Th- there has been no change to the estimate on the site work from the beginning. So what we put in for the site package to the MSBA over a year ago is the same as what it is now. There was no value engineering cuts based on site work. As you, as everybody knows, there were some value engineering decisions made. None that affected educational program due the to the unprecedented escalation of steel, wood, and the majority of all of the different materials needed to build a school.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I do apologize. I've had a cold, so I I don't want it to come off like I'm angry or barking at anyone. It's just my voice is very hoarse.
And again, Madam Chair, ju- just to uh to to back up a little bit again, I I want to, I appreciate very much Superintendent DeBarry and and Representative Diamond for their time and coming here this evening. And as I explained at the last meeting, I had conversation after the previous meeting before that with Mrs. Diamond in relation to some of the concerns, ADA concerns raised. I did not invite her specifically to the meeting because there was a misunderstanding on my part. Uh they have always offered to come before the board, have over the last decade or more. Uh every time we've asked them to come, they've come. And again, I appreciate their being here this evening. And I spoke with Superintendent DeBarry after the last meeting. And again, he's welcomed the opportunity to come and present uh um to answer some of the questions that were raised at the last board meeting. So again, I appreciate their being here and taking the time and it's a good thing we're doing it virtually so that I don't have slippery roads. So again, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
And thank you for saying that, Mr. O'Leary, because we have, Dave and I and my other representatives have always attended every meeting that we've been asked to attend in North Reading. We also have a great relationship with the North Reading School Committee and meet with them yearly to discuss the updates of this project. So nothing's changed in any of since any of those meetings. And it is very frustrating to us because it is a ploy to delay this project. And you know delays are costly, so we are trying to avoid that.
Okay, Mrs. Diamond, I'm I'm gonna go to my colleagues to see if they have any other questions. Um so or or.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, are you all set? Do you have any questions?
No question. Uh um just the the reason we were concerned is because we were given a photo of the school, and it was showing this large set of stairs that you know, had different levels. That was making it look like somebody who was handicapped wouldn't be able to access the school. But the way you're describing what I just understood is that it's quite similar to what we have here at our high school where you would drive up to an entrance, and then it would be accessible at that point.
Yep.
Is that correct? Yes. Where did you get that photo you're referring to?
Uh, one of our colleagues showed it to us.
Mrs. Diamond, you're asking where the photo is. Have you not seen that photo, Mrs. Diamond?
And I don't, I'm not sure which photo you're referring to.
Of the the set of stairs along the side, up up steep sets of sets of several, actually several staircases up the side of the.
Mr. Wallner sharing the picture that he showed to us.
She's talking about the nature walk, Judy.
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that that um it's the same type of access that North Reading High School has where you do drive up to the building.
Well, that's that's not the picture. The picture shows um the front entrance, and it shows the yellow ramp. That's the serpentine path that goes all the way down to parking. Right?
Well, hopefully, Mr. DeBarry, I know he sent something um today of the of the existing plans for the school. Hopefully, um that Mr. Um that Michael can find that and share that with you. If not, we will do that again.
I have it. I have it, and I can see it.
Can we, can we please go through the chair, folks? Please. One at a time. We we have you here to answer questions. We don't want people talking over one another so that we can get these questions answered. We get the facts on the table. Okay, so one at a time. Mrs. Gonzalez has the floor. She's asking questions specific to pictures. And we just need the answers, not questions back or things like that. That's all. Can we please call up the picture that we looked at just a minute ago?
Okay.
This is the picture that we saw last meeting that showed we can't see any drive up at all here. So if there's a picture showing the design, what what we're trying to focus in on is you showing us accessibility to the school. What was shown to us back in two thousand and twenty-one, when you came to us asking us to vote in support of this and to get members of the community to vote in support, looked a bit different than this. And so what we want to know is, is this the current plan or the design plan? And if and it, you seem to be saying, Mrs. Diamond, you've never seen this before. You've never seen this picture before.
I'm I'm not sure to act, I can't see anything but myself. I don't know why I can't get into the to the um screen with all of you there. I don't know what I've done wrong.
So you did this, then we'll just go, maybe we'll go back. Yes, please. Where does this picture come from?
Mr. DeBarry, do you see it?
Mr. DeBarry?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's absolutely probably one of the pictures. Um the outline is once again of a nature walk. Um on the PowerPoint that I shared with uh Mr. Gilberto today. Um and then hopefully everyone can see it afterwards. Like I said, it's the PowerPoint that I originally shared, um you know, back a year and a half ago. Um in that PowerPoint, you will see that that the a picture larger than this one that includes the um the the sports fields, that includes the parking and access around those sports fields. Um so I think you will be completely satisfied when you do see the picture. Um but there are lots of pictures, and I'm not surprised they chose this tiny snapshot um so that they could take the the whole issue out of context. And this is the kind of shell game that's been going on. But I I am completely assured that you will see the whole design as it was when I presented to the town of North Reading. When you opened that PowerPoint.
All right, let's have Mr. Gilberto Gilberto call that one up for us, please. Because I think that's what my colleagues will be wanting to ask questions on.
Madam Chair, Superintendent DeBarry did send multiple documents along, one of which was a PowerPoint, but uh for some reason, it doesn't look like it's uploaded into the meeting packet. So if you bear with me.
Yeah, I didn't see it. So I don't know how my colleagues are, but I want to get back to Mrs. Gonzalez because she was had the floor, and I apologize, Mrs. Gonzalez, but I think too many people are talking over one another, and let's do this one one colleague at a time so we can get this squared away fi- for for good.
No, Madam Chair, um I do have a packet, a separate packet, that I can see um different pictures of the the school. I don't see something specifically showing me the driveway to the school. I don't know if um I'm I'm seeing the front entrance, but what you're describing to me, Mrs. Barry, is something similar to what we have is 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 what I'm understanding, that there's a that there's a steep drive that will go up the hill by car. And then there will be access to everything.
Madam Chair, if I can respond?
Yeah, I I'm not, I'm not sure we're here on the design of our high school. I don't understand why that keeps coming into the dialogue here.
He's comparing it. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but he's he's what he's trying to make us understand, because you're not seeing the visual of it, is that uh it's the same kind of access as we have. It it is going to be up high. But there's a driving access just like we have, and then there's accessibility once you get up there. That's what I'm.
But but our our high school has a road leading up to the high school.
That's what he's saying. He has. That's what this.
But down below, we have a parking lot and accessibility to the fields below that's right adjacent to those fields. So I'm not quite clear on this, but Mr. Gilberto, can you draw up the Mr. Gilberto, can you share your photos or?
Yes, I believe I have the 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 document, and Superintendent DeBarry can correct me if I'm wrong. It's in your in your meeting folder. It's entitled Northeast North Reading Packet. That's the portion of it I can see. Um it's in the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting folder from this evening. For this evening, I will share the document.
Yeah, what page are you on in that?
I'm on page twelve of that document, and I would ask you, Madam Chair, if Dr. uh Mr. DeBarry could just confirm I'm in the right spot. This looks like it's the PowerPoint presentation portion of what you sent along.
Yes, uh through Madam Chair, if you go to slide number eight, probably on page two.
Yeah, that's not in the packet, Mr. Gilberto. So we're gonna have to rely on what you are. I don't have that in my packet.
It it's in the packet, Madam Chair.
It's not in my packet, folks.
You have to come. Madam Chair, you have to come out of our packet. It it's a separate packet.
Okay, let's just go to the design photos that are in there. Hopefully, it's Mr.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. DeBarry, if you could just let me know when to stop.
Yep. Nope, I think you went too far. I think we have to back. Wait, look, the next one might have it. Let's see. Yep.
Is that it?
Yep. So if you can see below, um there's a second there's another road that winds around all of the sports fields. And also you can see a secondary set of parking that actually um line right up to the sports fields. So you would drive, we could take anybody down the road. Um it's also walkable, but you know, again, I wouldn't recommend it. We we have a great nature walk, but it is completely accessible through parking spaces and a road that if somebody needed to drive directly to a sporting event, that that he would have no problem pulling up right in front of the field.
Yes, can I ask a question about the slide, please?
Is Mrs. Gonzalez, are you, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I I what I wanted to see was the accessibility other than that staircase that we were shown. So the ex- that the road accessibility to the entrances and the fields.
To the field or to the school?
To both. So where is, Mrs. Barry, where is the road that would go to the school?
The road that comes to the actual school is off to the far left. So if you went straight off the picture, that would go to the actual um school itself. Now, that same road follows all the way on the bottom of your screen where you can enter the school, you can park at one of our many handicap parking places, or you can keep going straight and bear off to the left, and that would take you to the fields that have multiple handicapped um um parking spaces, ramps, and accessibility.
Okay, thank you. Are you all set, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I'll probably be a little bit long. Um so um so I'm Rich Wallner. I I uh let me, where where should I start? Um it's been a little messed up tonight that uh we aren't in person because I had a physical copy for all of you, including you, David, and you, Judy, to uh look at. So I'm gonna kind of walk through it. Um the select board did receive this packet, so if you can follow along, that'd be good. I'll just try to do the best I can to describe it. Uh let me start from the beginning. The people I've been talking to um because I have had contact with the grassroots people and the efforts that are going on. I have, you know, I what who I've been talking to. Everybody's in agreement that we, everybody wants to see a new book school. So there's no disagreement about that. And I didn't get, I haven't gotten the notion that people are mean-speared spirited or trying to just you know, just um what I'm hearing is this implication that there's just bad blood out there, and they'll just do anything to stop it. I'm I'm not, I haven't that's not the kind of messages I've been receiving. So I just want to be really clear about that. Um I've been talking to some very responsible and smart people who care about what's going on here. So I'm just gonna give kind of an overview, uh uh and I'll be as brief as I can. Um, you know, just for the sake of the board as well, to kind of know how this all fits in together because um uh David DeBarry was kind of bouncing around a lot of issues. And I'll try to be clear. So this all started really basically in two thousand and sixteen. Uh uh Durham Whittier were hired to be uh do the pre-feasibility study. Um they basically came back and said the Hilltop, uh they looked at the different sites. They said that the Hilltop version was untenable uh and functionally compromised to pursue. Um after that, um in August of two thousand and nineteen, PMA came in as their consultants. And then in May of twenty, um they started uh started doing community workshops, which were extremely limited during the pandemic, and also because they weren't readily available. A lot of meetings that went on, there was no documentation of the meetings. Um and then by, then they hired in um uh DRA, which is another architect, who then did come back with a study that said that the Hilltop was the place to be and not elsewhere. And that's known as Site C three, just so you know. Now, I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit. Um when we became back involved, now I don't know about all the slides you're talking about and everything else like that. But I did go back to our NorCam and looked at um the meeting before our town meeting. And there was one slide that was presented, and it was all about the economics. There was no pictures about the building. None of that was uh available to us at all. We did not see any pictures of that building or what you were planning to build. And then when we went to town meeting, I also listened in on that. And again, both both Judy and David were there. And the same slide that presented, which was just about the economics and the need for the school. But there was no picture of the school itself or what the plan was to go for. So the in the two meetings leading up to that, there was, there's no evidence of that, and you can certainly go to Nor- NorCam and find that out. Um what alarmed me was, you know, not only I'm on the select board, but I'm liaison for a variety of committees. On twelve-six twenty-two, um the friends of the, you know, the 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 school project, um you don't consider them the friends, but their friends um came to the Commission on Disabilities. And the picture I showed on the side here is a picture they showed us. And I gotta, I'm gonna go back to that picture for a second just so we can see it. And in that picture, you know, I had in the room, I had the five people who are part of the Commission on Disabilities, who are very in tune with what's going on here. I also had our building inspector. I had our public services director. And I also, um yeah, those are the other two people listening. And when we looked at this, it was a gas that went across the road because the accessibility was clearly, this was not an excessively friendly place. Now, I understand that, you know, what you're building is ADA compliant. I understand that. That is a minimum standard. This this serpentine path, now I believe that the parking lot in the back and the parking lot in the front is required to, because we have sixteen hundred students coming, and they're not all driving, but a lot of them are. So I believe the number of parking spots in the back is about two fifty, two sixty. And then you need more parking spots in the front. The road doesn't make sense unless you're gonna have somebody drop them off and drive them. I don't really understand how that works. So there's gonna be people who have to come up with either the serpentine path or the concrete path. And there's been a talk of an elevator that may be there for two of those ten flights, but maybe not depending on what happens with the value engineering. This is not a friendly, even if ADA compliant, this is not a friendly way to approach that building. And I'll give you an example. Um in our own high school, we have um and this is more than just disability and wheelchairs. These are people who are challenged by mobility. It's not just students, it's the teachers, and it's people that come to visit. And so if you think about the um uh, you know, just trying to get from our school at the front entrance, which is all at street level, and then you walk all the way to our distance learning lab. Which is all at street level. And then you walk all the way to our distance learning lab. There's many people who can't make that distance or won't make that distance because it's too long of a rock for them. And that's all on a flat plane. So there's a difference between ADA compliant and being ADA friendly. And this is not a friendly design. I'm sorry to say. Um, so a- after that, after we saw that, we politely reached out to Judy Diamond. We had three people write Gina from my. Commission on Disabilities wrote to her, uh, the Public Service Director wrote to her, as did the um. As did the uh, the building inspector. We received no response.
I never got anything from them, ever. I don't know where they sent it, but I never got anything.
Is it your Comcast dot net address?
Let's not, can we please not have a back and forth?
Okay, yeah, no response.
Mr. Wallner, if you could, uh, this really, we really have the other colleagues may have questions here. And if we can, I appreciate your presentation, but really we pointedly have these individuals here to answer our questions on the design. So I think it's pretty clear that what you are, you're talking about what was included. Either isn't the representation of what is being designed there or is only the representation of a. A portion of that that doesn't actually show what uh the representatives here. Are saying, so it's not the whole design, so.
Well, I think that, I think that the the, you know, and this this came up when when um the response of the letter to, there there's the fellow who wrote. You know, Jack McCarthy wrote on the commission, he's the Commission of Disability at City Melrose. He wrote about two things about accessibility, just like we're talking about right now. He also talked about the square footage for special ed. Inside there. And then uh, Mr. DeBarry responded back. Um, you know, that it meets all ADA compliance. I just told you about, you know, I think that's just not enough considering. The considering that twenty-four percent of the population that attends that school is considered disabled. Um, and then if you go to his last page, he says that, um, you know, on the last page, second page, the two comments he made is that, you know, this is. What the site they're for, they're um proposing now has gone to the building committee, school committee, which are one and the same, by the way, as far as members are concerned. And the MSBA's Board of Directors, um, it is a project that was overwhelmingly approved by voters throughout the twelve town region. Is a project that is currently progressing through the permitting process, except that nobody saw those. That project, I'm gonna look what. Our town did not. And we we put eight million dollars of faith into this group and we never saw a picture of the town, never saw a picture of what was gonna be built. Um, I will be brief um and continue to move on. Um, and I will be happy to send you this information, David and Judy. Um, if you give me your uh information. Um, and then if you get into, you know, there's another fellow who wrote, and I think this is probably in the packet as well, Brian Thompson. Who's a registered architect, you know, studied a university archi- architect, urban design, Harvard Graduate School of Design. He's done big buildings before, school committee and everything else like that. And he comes back and pretty much had reviewed the the original. Pre feasibility study and I commented that it was not invasive, a good use of space. And thought it was a really perfect solution. He he also supported it and then discovered afterwards. That this had all changed. The Hilltop design was now being uh brought in and was, you know, shaking his head. About how this could possibly happen. If the town, if the town of Wakefield knew, they would have uh. Had known, they probably would have had a different voice. And so part of this is that there's been a lot of during this time. There's been a lot of missing minutes, a lot of missing meeting meetings. There's been brief agendas. There's been um, you know, no recorded Zoom meetings. It's been really hard to label to the point where uh, two weeks before the January twenty-fifth vote. When everybody voted, they had a member of their committee in Revere telling them that the building was gonna be to the local newspaper. That the building is gonna be built on the athletic fields on the bottom floor. And the Boston Globe on October twenty-second also. Recorded that this was gonna be built in the athletic fields. It's it, but with no correction made by the Volk School. So it's really not a surprise that people would be confused and be wondering now at this late stage, what's going on? And it's just the lack of communication that's going on. So I, you know, you know, I've looked at this, oh, and then we start getting in the numbers. The value engineering is now thirty-five million dollars, thirty-four, thirty-five million dollars. And I'm looking at, you know. Details of what's being cut. And there's already a lot of things being cut. And some of those are like their audit, you know, the auditorium um re-envisioned. We kind of know what that means. We're starting to talk about lockers, synthetic turf fields. You know, there's a variety, I mean, there's pages of things. That are being taken out of this project to make the um, the project work. And with a building of about a hundred and eighty million dollars and forty million dollars of site work. Which I believe the state will not cover a lot of. There's just many questions about what's going on here. So what I'd be happy to do is I'd be happy to send. Um, uh, you know, my package to them. And I'm really encouraged them to rethink what they've done. I'm not doing it in an angry way. I'm doing it a way of saying that people should be collaborative and it should be logical process. I think that the um, the committee, the building committee, school committee has not been very uh transparent. Maybe you are now, but it wasn't during the process. And um, uh, people are left in the dark and it raises questions. The last thing I'll say is that the um, uh, it was mentioned that the hockey, you know, rink has never been mentioned. Um, I have back in a. On three thirty, twenty twenty-one, the town of Wakefield Permanent Building Committee um, uh. Actually brought up about um Kevin Nygro before Wakefield Permanent Building Committee pitching PMA to the O P M. For Wakefield Memorial High School, he referenced collaboration with Steve Mayo, ability to carve out a space for future shared project. Which is the hockey rink and the success of the North Reading High School project, which finished on time and under budget. Didn't happen. Um, anyways, um. So I really have no questions. I'm I'm making a a fair request that they rethink what they're doing and uh. And I also have read that the M F, they did not object to the other two sites and that they were okay with those sites as well, if that was to be the case. Thank you.
Mr. DeBarry, did you want to comment in regard to Mr. Wallner's comment?
You know, uh, but I first must ask, Madam Chair. I could stay here for the next twenty minutes if you'd like, um, and comment on the inaccuracies of the majority of what was said. Um, I'm not sure, you know, it's in your best interest of your time. I know you've had a long night, but I'd be happy to go through each item. Individually, I took as many notes as I could while um, while you're speaking. But it's um, your call how you would like me to proceed.
If it's okay with you, I think, I think Mr. Studo may have some question or comment. And I just have a few quick questions. So you might be able to answer everything all at once, if that's okay. I think, I think if we don't, if you don't mind, if I could just jump to Mr. Studo, that way you have a sense of what everyone's concerned. If there are any concerns.
Sure.
I I do have some pointed questions that might, you might be able to answer that maybe addresses both. Mr. Wallner's and my issues. So if you don't mind hanging on.
Okay.
We'll just go to Mr. Studo and then I can just quickly ask mine, just for some clarification on some of the presentation. Mr. Studo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So uh, I just have a few questions and depending on how you answer, I'll have a comment. Um, you know, including myself, because I've been one of them in the past, can't believe that a butter's complaining of a construction project. Who would have thought in Massachusetts? That never happens. Um, so um, I just have a a couple of questions, so. Um, I'm trying to fa- I I'm trying to separate fact from opinion, right? Um, uh, everyone's entitled to an opinion. Then there's facts, right? Everyone is entitled to, you know what? Maybe that nature walk or that picture, however, maybe instead of making it accessible five ways and. Let's make it accessible twenty ways, right? That's an opinion, then there's a fact of how it is. So let me ask this question, right? This design, the current one right now, based on your PowerPoint, was that the one that was given to voters before they voted?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. All right, let me check that box. Also, and again, I'm not even gonna give you my opinion because this is a fact-based conversation. So. Is right now that design, which you just confirmed was given to voters before we voted, because I'm one of them, ADA compliant?
One hundred percent.
Okay, what, i- is anything from your PowerPoint, how it is designed? And I'm just being specific, trying to get a triple confirmation. Has it changed at all between then and now?
From that design, the only piece that may have changed was there was a small area for visitor lockers. That we decided we would have our students build and we would have the construction company pour a concrete slab. Um, to work towards some value management engineering. Um, and that was something we thought our students would be excited to do as we just did one for the town of Winthrop. That was identical. So that was an easy value management um change. Other than that, everything else is the same, identical.
So, so then, okay, I'm gonna take your word for it because you got no reason to lie, plus I have your presentation. So here's how I look at it. If there was nothing fraudulent and if there was, any of these groups would have hired an attorney who would have taken the case. And would have already had a suit to say, hey, you said this, but you did that. Because I know that in United States of America, if an attorney can find a reason to sue a town or committee, they will. And these groups would have found one because there's plenty out there looking for cash. But if the voters voted in good faith, based on what you said, that ship sails. I am very big in the democratic way of doing it and I get that certain things, we can give an opinion, right? Like, for example, if you can do it and make it better and more accessible, let's do it. Why not? Who wouldn't want that? However, what I will say is this. I take accusations seriously. Okay, and before I became a select board member, I was part of the public who made. Maybe sometimes my opinions, not that they weren't informed, but I didn't realize that when you start accusing anyone in the public space of dishonesty. You better be right. Because if you're wrong, it's a problem. So. My point is that if I as a voter got to vote on that plan the way it is right now. And that was voted on by, I know we had to go townwide, right? And then there had to be a majority and I forgot how the vote ended up, but here's what I know. I'm sorry, but if you're upset to these groups, I don't know these groups, so there's no, this is not a personal opinion. If you're upset, you gotta take it up with the voters of twelve cities. I I it it just, I I get what you're saying, but the thing is that here, unless there, let's work and try to find a solution. I'm just trying to say that, again, let's separate the fact that under good faith. That passed at a townwide meeting. Now, the opinion, that's a different thing. Everybody's entitled to it, like, hey. Can we make this better? If we can, of course, but I just don't want, I I just don't like when it sounds like, well. Since we know opinions aren't gonna win in court, we're gonna try to make our, like, we're gonna try to say that somehow we were. It's a bait and switch, right? That's the argument, that there was a bait and switch, that what you made us recommend at town meeting, our town meeting. Was fraudulent. And I can tell you, I'd be the first one down your throat if I ever found out that that was the case, because then you're making, like. You know, you put me in a bad spot with my town and my friends and uh, community members. So again, that's just my commentary, that those were my questions, that, you know what, if we can make it better, please do. If we can make it. Uh, you know, if we can do it without having to rip up more than we need to, why not? You know? It's not like everything's like Malden when I was growing up in Medford where Italians couldn't, couldn't wait to pour concrete on everything, right? So it's just something where, you know, I I just wanted to separate that because I'm just hearing a lot of, I think. We hope, we thought, we wish, but that all comes before the vote. Like, uh, the thing is, if if it was in good faith, in my opinion, and there was no bait and switch. And I I'm taking your word for it based on your presentation, then. The time to convince the majority of the communities was then, like, that's all I'm saying. Like, I mean. If we revised every time a town meeting or elected officials at any government body approved a law where then, you know, we get to do like a big redo. Nothing would ever get done. Like, I it it just, to me, it sounds like buyer's remorse, not so much buyer's remorse, but more of like. I couldn't get enough people to agree with me and I gave, the vote went against me, so now I'm just gonna. I don't wanna say roadblocks. I disagree with that. I don't think, I I don't think these, these people who have their feelings, I don't think they're trying. Uh, stop the project. I think they genuinely believe that, but so maybe my request to you is. Can you make a good faith effort to maybe address what Mr. Wallner's? You know, what his feedback he got, because I, because if what you said is true, it should. Qualm some of their issues, maybe not all, but some. So that's only my ask. So, thank you, uh, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Studo. And I, I would actually disagree with some of your commentary. Based on the special acts where we're member communities, we absolutely still maintain involvement. In as a community, a member community and a say in this. And I I do agree. And and uh, Mr. DeBarry, DeBarry did confirm that when this was initially presented to us. We did put him on the spot then to say, is this the actual design? And is this the actual budget? And we're, we're gonna hold you to that and we're gonna not expect. That this is gonna change or suddenly there's gonna be another comeback for another vote on this. We do have, we do have ability. To do something if we see that accessibility is an issue. I totally disagree with you. Yes, voters gave their overwhelming approval for this project and the, the member communities that didn't. It doesn't matter because the overwhelming majority of the voters that voted said yes to it. So. The minority, it doesn't matter, they're coming along board anyway, unless they come out of the member community and no longer have eligibility to attend. But we do have the right to question things and we do have the obligation to question things. So I disagree with that. And there is a whole slew of agencies, uh, state agencies that can address this if need be. But before we get to lawsuits and lawyers filing claims or people filing claims. We heard something, we were concerned, very concerned about what we heard and what we saw. And we wanted to speak with the representatives. They didn't realize it, but they're here today. So that's what we're here to address and to confirm that there aren't the accessibility issues that perhaps we might have been. We we might have been made to, that we made, might have thought this was gonna, this was a, you know, what from what we saw. So I'm sorry I'm stumbling over my words, but I disagree with you, Mr. Studo. We do have the opportunity. We have the responsibility to actually address it on behalf of at least our member community and our. Students who are gonna be attending there, who might, you know, need have accessibility requirements. But I just wanna show you, if, is it possible for me to share my screen, Mr. Gilberto? Because what I saw, what I remember seeing, and I could be wrong, but I just wanna share what I saw as a design. Because I think it might help at least clarify for me, because I do have a couple of questions. Um, let me see if I can share this. That, do you, can you see what I'm sharing on my screen?
Uh, can anybody tell me what I need to hit to be able to see what's going on? Because I, I've been trying and I can't do that.
No, that's something you're gonna have to try to, what do you want, an iPad, Mrs. Diamond?
I'm on my iPhone, I mean, my cell phone.
I don't really know. I don't think we would know unless we were right there with you.
All right, well, I can, I can hear everything anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think if Mr. Mister DeBarry, can you see what I'm sharing?
Yes.
So see, can you see where my, my arrow is?
Yep.
Just from my edification, when you go to this new school building, this is the roadway in and to the new school. Right here that I'm, okay.
Yep.
I think what we saw. Is a picture of this side right here. So if we're looking, you know, to the, to the school building. And we're looking at this, it's to the easterly side of the building.
Yep.
Is this where those? Is this where those nature pathways are that you were referencing?
Yes.
So these are, so in this on your picture to the easterly side of the nature paths is where the school was. As, and it's going to be replaced by these fields, right? These athletic fields, right?
Correct.
Is there a roadway or a pathway, and you mentioned golf carts? But is there a roadway or a pathway where individuals with accessibility needs can? Get to the fields, which I presume are below, because it looked like it was steep. That they don't have to walk through the zigzag vegetation patches or those steep staircases? Is there a way for the, for individual students with accessibility needs to get from the new school building down to the fields?
Yep. Yes, that, so that road extends, it's a little covered up by some of the um, the writing that's on that, but if you follow that, same road that you come in on the left. It takes you all the way down the pathway.
Right here is a road, right?
And then down to the fields.
Right here.
Yep.
Okay. So what I also saw in the design schematics. Was a picture of what you proposed, which we did get presented to us, which appeared as though. This school site where the new school building is going is on one level in in terms of accessibility from the exterior. And from the parking lots, it's on a single level. You're not tiered levels up and down to, at least in this location of where this is built. Is that right?
Right.
So all of these. Entryways would be accessible and the parking right here is what you're saying. If an individual had need for closer parking to be able to get into the building, it's right there, level with the entryway to the school.
Correct, yep, correct, and in back and on both sides, even though you might not be able to see it on this picture, so all four sides will have. Um, access and parking spots.
Okay. So that original drawing or rendering that we saw showed that. But I think what our major concern, or at least mine was. We saw an image of, I think the side of this is what I think we were looking at. Which is this side where those, it looked like they were. Zigzagging pathways down the steep embankment. And that's what we thought was the entryway to this, or at least I thought, I'll say I thought. Was the entryway where you'd have to park below and then walk up the hill.
Correct.
But that isn't correct.
Right. Although the next city or town meeting that I get invited to, when they jump to another town, I can assure you I'll be having the same question in the same description.
Yes, okay. Well, that's kind of really important because. If there was no change, which you've already said. And of course, every single one of us wants to ensure that this is accessible. And obviously, the most, you know, natural state and trees and vegetation preserved as best as you possibly can. Is there going to be blasting on the site for this new school building?
Yes.
Where is that going to happen?
Um, the area where the actual um, school is, I can't.
Right here.
Yeah, I mean, I did maybe other pieces, little here and there. I know we're trying to flatten out. And take some of the ledge off where we're going down to the field, so it's not as steep as an incline. But the majority of the blasting, that's where it is.
So, from what I read between last week and this week, and I didn't get your packet, so I'm getting this from the publicly shared information that that is. That the school is holding. From what I read. The design, which included the cost for that blasting. And includes the building that is. That is designed to the budget that all of the member communities voted to approve.
One hundred percent.
So there is no expectation that due to the blasting. You're going to have to come back and let's say your architect says, oh, my goodness, we made a mistake. We need $30 million more. We have to go for another vote.
Nope, that did not occur.
Okay. And the design that is to budget also includes the accessibility elements inside the building, right?
At one hundred percent.
Okay, so they're not going to come back and tell you. Oh, my goodness, we can't do an auditorium anymore. We don't have enough money. We'll just take out all the chairs. They're gonna, you're gonna build it the way that you presented it to. As as the schematics were shown to voters before we went to that vote.
Yes, correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Studo.
Just just a clarification, um, I wasn't trying to say that we couldn't have. Commentary after the facts, because. That's not, what I was trying to say is that. For the purposes of some of the initial issues, it seems that it's an opinion on design. Right, of where certain elements of making it more accessible could be, and what I was just trying to say is that. If if there were opinions of design that were this much of a concern, and this presentation was given and this design was presented, I was just trying to say that. I I I just wish some of these things that, i- if it is true, and we can believe Mr. DeBarry. I I just wish that some of these big things were presented prior to the vote. That's all I was saying, that. We can still talk about it now, but let's not say that. You know, I just don't want, it doesn't seem like after your questioning, I actually feel even more confident that, based on how you laid it out, that I I just don't want it to. It it was trying, it was starting to appear to me, I'm not trying to confuse myself. It was starting to appear to me that I was being told by some of the people with the complaint that, no, Mr. Studo. It wasn't just a design issue. They didn't even show you the, this actual design. This just came out of nowhere after the vote. That's all I was saying. I wasn't saying that we shouldn't comment after.
I understand. Understand, but they're bound by building codes, regulations, architectural access codes. They have to hire a designer that's going to comply with the law, including on these accessibility elements. So. There's little opinion involved in that. These are requirements, these are building codes, these are state laws, these are state regulations, so. If, you know, they've hired an architect to build, build it to code, it's a brand new building, there's little leeway. That they would have unless they obtained a variance from the architectural, architectural access board. Doesn't sound like that they. Needed such a variance from what I just heard. So I know what you're saying, but. We're not helpless to just sit back and watch something if we think there's a problem where it is our obligation to to take action on it. Or at least to address it. Okay, I have my other colleagues for. Questions, Mr. Walner and then Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, just briefly, um, the uh. I'm working backwards. You just talked about, uh, Mr. DeBarry just said that the auditorium was not on the cut list. In fact, they're taking 1.8 million dollars out of the budget. On the value engineering to re-envision the auditorium. So I don't understand, that doesn't make any sense to me. The other thing is that. Vincenzo just asked him at the beginning, were the voters. Uh, did they see the project? Did all the voters see the project before they voted? And I can just speak, you can go look at Norcam, it's at the end of our town meeting. There was one slide presented, there was no pictures of this, of this building at all. So what we committed to a town meeting was the budget. We didn't commit to the school design itself, and honestly, it shouldn't have. I I don't think it's really, I don't think we even asked the question of what the design should be because we're entrusting them to do that. They have a responsibility, the communities, to do a really good job. Us asking questions about this at this point is very appropriate. So I don't, I don't know how Mr. DeBarry could say that the voters knew about the project when, at least in our town, they never saw it. So just to clear the record, thank you.
I'm pretty sure we saw it, though, Mr. Walner. It was presented to the board.
If if it was, that that might be the case, but the town. The people who vote are the voters. And at the town meeting, we showed one slide and had nothing to do with the pictures of the, of the building. It only showed. Uh, how we, you know, how it's going to be funded over 30 years, how much it was going to cost us, and the need for replacing the current school. That's what we, that's what the town voted on. We never, the town never saw the pictures of the school.
Madam Chair, I'd love to respond.
Mr. DeBarry.
Thank you so much. So when you do get your packet downloaded, the first three pages. You will see times and dates of, I believe, 60 meetings that I attended. That does not include the town meetings, the FINCAR meetings, the school committee meetings. In the board meetings. I attended personally. Eighty-plus meetings in person during a very short period of time. On the next page, you'll see some analysis of our Facebook page that we really worked hard on. It reached over 77,714 people with additional visits to the pages. The next three items you will see were sent directly to the town manager and to the board that. Updated with pictures, with designs, and with discussion on why we. Um, located the building where it was. In each one of them, and there were numerous. There were probably at least 40 to 50 newspaper articles. Many of which, and those are also in the packet. Showing where this site would be built. Okay? To say that we did not do our diligence, I'd love to meet another superintendent or building committee. That did the outreach that that Northeast did for this project. And again, I, you know, I I'm trying to um, not not get emotional or frustrated. But this was 100 nights away from my family, away from my kids' sporting events, fighting every night for what was right for our kids. To sit here and say that there was no transparency in no.
Did he freeze?
Yes.
That's what happens when you get overheated.
Well, he he has the right to be. I'm sorry. I'm sure he'll get back on as soon as he can, but we are frustrated. I'm sure you can see that. In the meantime, is there anything else that we can discuss, or are we almost over here?
No, we'll, we'll just give him a minute, Leanne. We're just gonna give him a minute.
Yeah, yeah, because I I want him to hear what I have to say.
Okay.
I just moved him to the waiting room and then readmitted him. Hopefully that will work.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, did I get thrown off because I got too loud?
Well. Certainly, it 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 helps for an explanation in a, in a, in a, maybe a lesser decibel, but if you could. We 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 missed what you said at the very end because you froze, so obviously you needed a cooldown there, so why don't you, why don't you unmute? We understand you feel that you were transparent in your process. You, the law requires you to be transparent. The special act that creates and governs requires you to have these. Numerous meetings. You're not like, you're not like every other superintendent, because you're a superintendent with multiple member communities, so that's what what's required, but. Let's try to finish up with my colleagues, if you don't mind. Mrs. Gonzalez has something to to add to to this discussion. Mrs. Gonzalez.
Um, first of all, I I just really want to thank Mrs. Diamond and. Mr. DeBarry, you know, for coming tonight, for explaining. We were basically. Shown a set of stairs with no other access. That was the picture we were shown. Um, we were told that the site changed since we did the vote. We were, we were told. Alarming things that it. It was alarming. So we had an obligation to have you answer those questions for us. And I feel that you have. Seeing those pictures with the road access that, you know, that it is accessible. Um, you've answered all the questions that I needed to hear, so I thank you for coming and explaining that to us and showing us the other side of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I might call it, Mr. O'Leary, anything else?
It just, the only comment I'd like to make is that. I I I, a little bit to to what. Mr. Studo said, even you, Madam Chair, you know, the the way that the process unfolds, you know, it happens over several years, you know, and we're. Acutely aware of that, and it's still sensitive to all of us, because we just went through the project ourselves and. You know, it it takes a long time and a lot of discussions and a lot of meetings. And a lot of opportunity for people to tune in, but generally they don't tune in until the very end, and you know, what's it going to cost me? How's it gonna go? You know, people end up voting. And again. What's important to understand is that, you know, you've got a dozen communities here who all have an elected representative, who will all have a vested interest in their community and have a responsibility to to. Look out for their their own community's best interests, as Mrs. Diamond does and has been doing. So it it's not done in a vacuum, you know, and it's also done in conjunction with a lot of communication with the local school department and with the local board here. Uh, which are not highly visible, other than. You know, we'll have a discussion occasionally about it as they bring it forward and as things are progressing. And then. For us, you know, what was presented at town meeting was a culmination of information that was shared with us over a long period of time. That the select board got behind, the school committee got behind, the finance committee got behind. And advocated for town meetings. So for the regular voter out there to be totally engaged, they rely upon people like ourselves, elected officials. To do our homework, to know what we're voting on, and to make recommendations to them at town meeting, which is what we did. And again, for the for the people that are. displeased with what's happening, that's also natural too. And again, I don't question their motives or their intentions. I truly believe that they feel strongly about, uh. You know, the ADA accessibility could be better, you know, uh, the number of trees that are being taken down, you know, could be handled differently. The site could have been different. But to Mr. Studo's point, you know. That ship sailed a long time ago, as to deciding where the location of this was going to be. Uh, when I talked to Superintendent DeBarry and Mrs. Diamond last week again, when I called them. Because Mrs. Gonzalez said, you know. I was alarmed as to what was being presented, and I just said I have a few questions, which came back to. Is the project that was presented up on the hill at the same location, yes or no? And I. Mr. DeBarry can verify this, just give me yes or no, yes or no, and he didn't give me yes or no, he gave me 100%. Then he said, you know. Included in the budget was the uh, the blasting on the site. Work that needed to be done, you know, 100%. Okay, was the value engineering that's being done in relation to the the project have anything to do with the, the site? Absolutely not. There's all the questions that we talked about. So so again, I felt very assured by the very frank conversation that I had with them prior to, uh, while I was inviting them to the meeting. And and again, I appreciate all the effort that's been put into this, all the effort that continues to be put into it, and they have a lot more work to do as this project goes on. For the people that are concerned. I think people hear your concerns. Uh, I think that in order to stop the project now, in order to address them. The cost for this would be astronomical. And again, people can argue that the cost of not doing it, again, is astronomical in terms of other. Issues, but. Twelve communities voted. The vast majority. Voted in favor of it. MSBA does the reviews. It's all gone through that whole process. Uh, again, I appreciate your willingness to come here, be candid with us and answer our questions. And what's good, I appreciate you, your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary, and I'll just, I'm just going to add one little last comment to this discussion because we do have to move on. I. Rather than being frustrated with these questions and these comments and things like that. Maybe if you just shifted your perspective and looked at this as another opportunity for you to. Speak to people about this, speak to what accessibility elements you are incorporated into this. Maybe people don't have the time to look. Maybe people don't have the time to look through every little last link on the website. Maybe they just need this forum, which is a public forum, to hear from you and hear this explanation from you. I, for one, am one of those people that need to hear from you directly to have these questions answered, and like Mr. O'Leary said, we're representing people that are, you know, maybe they're not thinking of it in the same factual way that you know, and that's really what we ask you, rather than be frustrated with us, look at it like it's an opportunity to talk with us about this amazing project. And all of the, all of the features that are built into the design of it, including the accessibility features. Um, and I I think, I don't think there's any other questions on it, but we would welcome the opportunity for you to come back and give us some updates on it and give us some highlights on it. And I I don't actually think anybody that has these accessibility issues is, I agree with Mr. O'Leary, is, has any mal-intent. And I, for one, I'll question that every day if I have to, to make sure that, make sure that the school that our students are are going to is accessible. That's a really important issue for us all. So I question it all the time, if if it's brought to my attention, and give you the opportunity, give you the opportunity to come here in this public forum and tell us what the facts are versus what we might be thinking based on what we're hearing or seeing. So thank you for coming here. And we're giving you the opportunity to speak to people that have these issues, so we hope that you also in turn appreciate our invitation to be here.
And I think, Madam Chair, just in relation to the value engineering that's that's gonna be needed to be done because of the cost escalation of um building materials and that, you know, this is substantial. And if you wanna take the opportunity down the road when you get that completed to just let us know what's, what's being impacted, um, just don't tell us there aren't gonna be any chairs in the outer term, and there isn't gonna be tiles on the floor, and there isn't gonna be any brick on the outside of the building. But whatever it is, you know, keep us informed so that we aren't shocked about it. And um, you've let us know that, know tonight that there is gonna be some value engineering because of costs associated with the building supplies, but not the uh the blasting. You know, that's helpful, but you know, keep us informed.
Happy to, happy to.
Making sure that your val- value engineering is done when it needs to be done. Way before anything is, right, cement and sticks and foundation poured and sticks in the ground. It has to be done timely so that you can consider all this stuff, and that's, that's just some unsolicited additional advice from us.
Based on experience.
Madam Chair, could I just uh say one thing?
Yes.
You know, my, um, we will always come at any time, and we enjoy sharing good news with you because this is an incredible school. And 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 my frustration is not about meeting with you or any board. We've been doing that right along, and I know we're gonna be doing it for a long time now. We're getting ready to start the project very soon. Um, but I am frustrated when somebody accuses me of not getting back to them. I have never been accused of that ever. I get that to everyone. So I don't know what that individual is talking about. I never received communication from anyone. And if I had, they would hear from me. So that is the only frustration I feel. But I thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to address your issues. I hope we cleared a lot up, and I hope we can work together uh from now on.
Mrs. Diamond, Mr. O'Leary did explain that to us because he's our liaison, so he he did say he did not specifically ask, he did not connect with you to ask you to attend, so that's why we had, we we put this to this meeting for.
No, that's, that's fine. Again, we apologize for that.
Yes, we knew that, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, so if we can move on, our next order of business is uh the public hearing, eight o'clock, public hearing to review the um spring and fall annual town meeting dates. I think there's a a public hearing notice in the file, so let me just see if I can get to that somewhere in here so that I can read it. Give me a second. Okay. The North Reading Select Board will hold an in-person, well, we're, we're holding a virtual public hearing, actually, on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three at eight P M. in Room fourteen, Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street, North Reading, Mass. And uh via virtual technology to receive public input on selecting dates for the spring and fall annual town meetings in accordance with the North Reading Home World Charter two dash four dash one with the hearing accessibility by internet, phone, one tap mobile, dial by location with the meeting ID posted. Um, this was uh pu- published January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three by the North Reading Select Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
I I sincerely apologize, but for the third time, my audio seemed to cut out, so I had to exit the meeting and then re-enter the meeting. Um, but Madam Chair, through you, uh where we are um after, significantly after the hour that we advertised the hearing for, um, and where we have the ability under the charter to conduct the hearing at at any point um in the months of January, February, and March, my recommendation is that we actually um continue the hearing and re-advertise it to act at a future uh meeting, the February thirteenth meeting. Um, I can tell you for the public record, we do have meeting dates identified already, and they were in the packet. Uh, we're looking at January twelfth, and I believe it was October third as the uh the two dates. Um.
You mean June?
June.
June, I'm sorry.
You already missed that one.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um.
Um, yes, uh June, June twelfth and October second were the two dates, but where there will be borrowing at these meetings, and there may be a question, my recommendation is we actually re-notice the hearings uh and conduct them at the next meeting.
And I would, I would, I'll go to my, defer to my colleagues on that, but I would just, because we do have people attending, just in case someone is here that wants to speak on it, I think we should also those individuals that may have joined us to comment on the those dates, if we could just also solicit comment while we're here. Uh, but are my colleagues in agreement that we can republish him and hold, hold this? Um, Mr. Gil- Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Mr. Studo? And I I'm fine with that, and are my colleagues okay if that, if I just open to, if anyone in attendance wanted to comment? Mr. Walner?
No comment.
Um, I'd be in favor of hearing anybody who wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Studo? And Manu Pelias, yes. So I'm just going to, for those in attendance, if any of you are attending, when you, if you notice the publication or on our agenda, the public hearing in regard to choosing the the meeting dates, um if any are in attendance and want to uh comment on that, we're going to just, in this, we're gonna open the public hearing, and we're gonna continue it to republish and hold the public hearing on a continued date. But if there's anyone here that wants to comment with respect, that's joined us to comment because you saw the publication, if you could raise your hand, comment on those dates. All right, seeing none, then the vote is to to continue and reopen the public hearing at our February thirteenth meeting, and perhaps we'll get to it earlier in the meeting.
Yes.
Hopefully by the hour.
All right. So Madam Chair, do you need a motion to continue the public hearing until Monday, February thirteenth at eight P M?
Mr. O'Leary's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Walner, any further discussion? Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye. Okay, our next order of business is to review remaining board commission and committee vacancies. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, just very briefly, uh the board did go through its annual appointment and reappointment process uh in December. But as I believe all of you know, we do continue to have some vacancies on a variety of different boards and committees. And so I really just wanted to let the board members know that we were intending to re-advertise uh the boards uh for which there might be any remaining vacancies. Um, you know, I believe nearly all are able to conduct their business at this point based on the membership. Uh, the last to try to resolve was the Council on Aging, and I was able to make some appointments to the Council on Aging uh earlier this month. But we are intending to run an ad uh for the customary thirty-day period. I will note that it will include the recently approved Transportation Committee, for which we're looking for five members um to be voting members as well, um and we'll put out and look forward to getting applications for that uh board as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any questions? All right, next order of business, then. We'll move on to the North Reading Fire Fighters Local number eighteen fifty-seven. Uh, vote to ratify the integrated agreement. Do we have a motion?
Yep, Madam Chair, I move to ratify the Integrated Memorandum of Agreement between the Town of North Reading and North Reading Fire Fighters, IAF Local eighteen fifty-seven from July one, twenty twenty, to June thirty, twenty twenty-one, and from July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye. All right, next order of business is to review and approve meeting, our meeting minutes.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes as written for the following dates. September seventh, twenty twenty-two, September sixteen, twenty twenty-two, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, October seventeen, twenty twenty-two, November seventh, twenty twenty-two, November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and January ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Did you say October third?
Uh.
Did you miss October third?
Uh, I'll add it, October third, twenty twenty-two. It was not on here.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? I ask if someone could move to amend just one, um, the January ninth regular session, page one. It talks about a a Scribner's error, and it should read Scrivener's error. Uh, Mr. O'Leary mentioned a Scrivener's error. I know the Scribners, they're a great family from the community. But I know what you meant to, and you meant Scrivener's error. All right? If if there's a, could one of.
Actually, he may have just said a Scrivener's error anyway.
To name it a Scribner's error, another Scribner's error. All right, is there a motion to amend to just change that one?
So move that, Chair.
All right.
Except as amended.
Except the minutes as amended. Uh, Mr. uh Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye.
Is that Mr. Walner that seconded that motion to amend, I think?
Mr. Walner, I'm sorry, yes. Motion to to approve as amended, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, we're moving on to the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Publix invited to a special event being held by the Flit Memorial Library featuring Brigadier General Woody Woodhouse Tuesday, January thirty-first at eleven A M. Time of this writing that indicated seats are limited, and their registration may be done via the library website. Uh, however, there are no available seats, and we have a very extensive waiting list for this uh great community event. Uh, we're working with information technology to be able to uh make it available live uh via NORCAM, um and we're fairly confident we'll be able to make it live via Zoom or other virtual technology. So for those who are not able to be in the room, um, there should be an ability to at least watch and hear um from Brigadier General Woodhouse uh that day. Um, I've mentioned to the board that um it'd be great if there's a member who's available to attend. Uh, we have a special gift that we'd like to present, and it'd be great if a board member was able to do so. Um, so I don't know if you wanna um consider that, Madam Chair. And then I just also wanna note that Human Resources Director Bob Collins and Library Director Sharon Calhoun have been facilitating and planning the event for a number of weeks now. And we're looking forward to next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday night?
Uh, Tuesday, the daytime. It's a, an event that we're uh looking to target. Um, both the school uh audience as well as uh our our seniors and and some veterans, and I think we're getting some 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 great turnout and interest. Again, um, you know, it's a somewhat intimate setting that we're, that we're looking to host the event in in the library, um and we are looking to make it available virtually as well.
And did you have a time on that?
Eleven o'clock, yes, eleven o'clock on Tuesday, January thirty-first.
Okay, January thirty-first, all right. And I don't know, I mean, does, are any of the members planning on attending that? I know it's.
I could if you can't make it, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Okay. Well, maybe, Mrs. Gonzalez, you can do the presentation if you're gonna be able to be there.
I can be there.
It'd be great if anyone else can join, but if you, for a person, per a person from the board, that'd be great, Mrs. Gonzalez, and that any of the rest of us that can join, or anybody from the public too, that can go to that too. Do you, do they need a head count in advance?
Uh, if possible, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Any other questions for Mr. Gilberto?
Right, a few other items, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
It's okay. No, no, I stopped just to, for that discussion, so thank you for having me. Um, I just note the residents may have noticed that the Department of Public Works was required to remove a split and dead apple tree in the upper part of the common. Uh, the tree's condition was identified when the holiday lights were being removed two weeks ago. The DPW does plan to plant a replacement tree uh as soon as conditions permit. I'm pleased to report that the Fire Department received a grant from the Department of Fire Services in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus and command board equipment, which is used to help manage fires at other major emergencies. And finally, bids have come in for the turf field replacement. Uh, unfortunately, the bids exceeded the available funding, including the funds that were appropriated at town meeting and received from the state via an earmark uh with the help of Representative Jones and Senator Tar. Current shortfall is approximately thirty-six thousand dollars, and we are, uh, that includes alternates for girls across lines and North Reading High School logo on the field. Uh, we are looking into the possible use of opera funds to bridge the gap, since this project was authorized at town meeting. And we do believe there's a way uh for it to fit, but we've not been able to identify the exact provision under this, the federal law that would allow it, so I more just wanna make the board aware that we have this issue that we're we're wrestling with. Um, time is of the essence. This project is due to be complete, uh, almost immediately after graduation in June, which means we only have a few weeks' time to um finalize a funding source, and we don't have a special town meeting on the horizon within that that timeline. So, um, you know, we may be back to the board asking for uh a, an affirmative vote to authorize the opera funding to bridge the gap on this, again, already approved project uh that's seen uh some cost escalation, along with nearly every other um cost that we've been, you know, we're incurring here in town. So I just wanna give the board a heads up, more than anything else, that we're working on that.
Ma- Mr. Gilberto, you said thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand dollars, roughly, yep.
Okay. Any other que- now, are you all set?
I am, yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I I think, I think that's an appropriate use of the opera funds, and wanted to get a project that's already been approved, but came in over budget for unforeseen circumstances to get the project completed, so I think that's a good suggestion to uh to consider the opera funds. Thank you for that.
Anybody else have questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. And we're gonna move, move on to board, board member reports and all the new business. We just do them together. Mr. Walner?
Um, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Um, good, other than to the extent that uh at our next meeting on the thirteenth, that we are anticipating uh presenting to the board a significant uh presentation on the wastewater, so.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, I just have um one thing to talk about. There is an event coming up that's being put together by the Community Impact Team, the North Reading High School Parents Association, and the North Reading P D. Um, they're doing this together. It is a substance use, mental health education event for parents. Um, it is Tuesday, February seventh, and it will be in the Distance Learning Lab at six thirty P M. Highlights include North Reading Police Detectives' report on local trend.
Highlights include North Reading Police Detectives' Report on Local Trends, data from School Resource Officer Lucci on youth substance use, information on counterfeit pills, fentanyl, and high-risk substance use trends, mental health among youth and more. So um, really great program that's gonna go on that night, and then the program will be given to the high school um, students, I believe, the next day. So if um, parents or anybody, really, you don't have to be a parent, even grandparents or anybody, this is gonna be an informative uh, event for everybody, if you can make it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Studo?
Well said, thank you.
Okay, and just on behalf of the board to to wish Lieutenant Romeo much happiness and all the things that he wanted to do in his next chapter of life, to, we wish him, wish him well. And thank him so much for his service to our community. He's become an icon for us, hopefully, so gonna be, he'll be missed. All right?
Ditto.
Ditto, ditto.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yep, Madam Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. All right, thank you.